Me first.
Do I have a speech?
Like to call the meeting to order and ask you all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District one, Morsette?
Here.
District two, Yaku?
Here.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland?
Here.
District five, O'Malley?
Here.
District six, Churchill?
Okay, so we are all here. At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here tonight who would like to address the council on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, but that might come before the council at a future meeting or have an impact on the city of Hudson, this is your chance to come up and speak. Would anyone like to address the council tonight? Would you like to? Would you come up and introduce yourself, sir?
Chief Marty Jensen, Police Department, 101 Vine Street, City Hudson. I just wanted to let the council know and everybody on the television that this will be my last council meeting until I come back in September. I'm leaving for the FBI Academy on July 8th. I'll be gone for 10 weeks. Lieutenant Paul Larson will be in charge of the department while I'm gone. Sergeant Eric Atkinson will be second in command. I will be getting emails. I will be checking them on a regular basis, so I will be able to correspond. But as I said, it's my last council meeting. I just wanted to say that I wouldn't be around and wish everybody good luck in the summer months while I'm gone. So, just wanted to pass that along.
We'll take care of your budget.
Yeah, thank you.
Have fun in Quantico.
Anyone else? I've got a presentation tonight. Okay, Betty Crusoe, please come up here.
Randy's not here, so at least it won't be.
You won't be, unless someone's got a phone in their camera, this is your chance to get it out. I'll wait for him to get ready. We appreciate your years of service.
Lee, you're probably more better at that stuff.
Yeah, we did pay you, but we got our money's worth. And so here's an award, and I'll read it. It is an appreciation award to Betty Crusoe. In grateful acknowledgement for your years of splendid public service rendered to the city as finance officer, head bean counter, and chief watchdog of the city.
I couldn't do this without the council and the staff that we have. We have a great group of people. It's been really a fun 10 years. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. Will you read those minutes, please?
To approve the regular and closed session meeting minutes of June 7th, 2010. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $501,614.64. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period June 22nd, 2010 to June 30th, 2011 to Emma Cotty, Tyler Haines, Matthew Ryan, Ivy Solom, and Wesley Welsh. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period July 1st, 2010 to June 30th, 2012 to Brian Ekholm, Nicole Dumke, James McCormick, Lindsey Perry, Shannon Ray, Carol Railey, Gordon Root, Molly Sales, Charles Sirius, Carly Sifco, John Walter, Kelsey D. Landers, Samantha Drinkwine, Haley Jo. Haas, Erin Hauser, Tricia Kramer, Kevin Olson, Amber Swanson, Lindsey Wells, and G. Yang. And to approve the issuance of a temporary operator's license to be used during the Hudson Booster Days event July 2nd, 2010 to July 4th, 2010 to Joel Eby, Heather Eggers, Tracy Jenkinson, James Londo, Gregory Marr, Helen McComby, Jerry McKenzie, and Ryan Schwellser. To approve the issuance of a taxicab license to Kilimanjaro Taxicab Service, doing business as Kilimanjaro Taxicab and taxicab driver's licenses to Robert Mubaye and Elijah Amueno. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B beer license to the Hudson Hockey Association to sell beer on July 10th, 2010 at the three-on-three youth hockey tournament at 1820 Hanley Road. To approve the issuance of an amusement device license to Gary Dwayne Anderson, doing business as Twin States Music, and permits for 94 amusement devices in the city. To approve establishing a residential parking permit on 12 Oaks Lane with costs for signage as recommended by the Finance Committee. To approve the installation of children-at-play signage on Hunter Hill Court with cost to be funded by the Hunter Hill Court residents. To place on file the quarterly report of the Parks and Public Works Director, the Public Utility Commission minutes of June 8th, 2010, and the Sankara EMS Commission minutes of June 16th, 2010. That is all.
The residential parking permit, the Finance Committee recommended that the signage be funded through the regular public work sign budget, and Tom Zooli said that there were funds available for that.
What about, will you pull D then? I mean, is that the same one? Children at Play?
No, the children at play.
Yeah, will you pull it?
Pull number one under Public Safety Committee from the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve in a second. Roll call vote.
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Churchill?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. That takes us to number seven. Under the Finance Committee, consider monthly administrative fee for cable TV funding and operations. Cable TV has had the city perform services for them in the area of accounting, payroll, auditing, general administration. They have been charged around $1,000 a month for several years, and they asked for a review. In Devon's review, he found that a fee of around $700 per month would be what he came up with based on actual costs. At the Finance Committee, we discussed this. The motion was that, beginning July 1st of 2000, or January 1st of 2011, we would change the fee to $700 a month unless new information about costs came to light. Am I stating it right? And I'd recommend that course. Further discussion there revolved around the fact that if we do a $5,000 per year adjustment mid-year in the budget, then where's it going to come from, from our budget? That it would be more appropriate to wait and do it in the regular budget process.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion's approved. Number eight is, consider authorizing Ellerson Associates to solicit bids for the 2010-2011 Geo Promissory Notes Resolution 11-10. Betty's here to tell us about this. Is Sean coming?
Well, Mayor, to ask if we could postpone this. I know he had a meeting in Richmond first, and then he's going to head out after he's from here too, so he's kind of timing us in between the two, so if we can wait for a little bit.
Postpone this until he gets here?
Sure. Yes.
Let's do that. Let's pick up with number nine. Consider annual renewal of alcoholic beverage licenses and approval for two provisional retail licenses. At the Finance Committee, we made two motions. The first was to recommend approval of the regular licenses subject to or contingent upon successful completion of building inspection. And that list includes Hudson Liquor, Dolce, JW Coladas, San Pedro's, Shanghai Bistro, and the original red Savoy Pizza. All the outstanding issues except the building inspection have been completed for all of those, and we recommend approval, subject to building inspection.
Move for approval.
Second.
There's a motion in a second for approval. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And so those regular, or pardon me, license renewals are approved. And then the second group, there are two where their application came in too late to allow for the 15-day requirement prior to placing it on an agenda, so they're not on tonight's agenda. We anticipate them being on the agenda for July 6th. Meantime, they would not have a license from the 1st to the 6th unless we approve a provisional retail license for them, and the Finance Committee recommended that we do that.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the provisional licenses. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And we'll prove those provisionals and talk about their licenses again at the next meeting. That takes us on to number 11. Number 11 is to consider approval of an elevator contract for 700 First Street Building. What Finance recommended that we have some additional time. We've had some legal discussions on various aspects of the contract that are ongoing, and also there was a preference to enter a one-year contract that would take us through the simultaneously, the new elevator being installed in that building for the library will have a one-year warranty, so they won't need a contract the first year, but they may want a contract second year. We want to try to get those two elevators synced up on one contract. So we'll work on that more, pursue that angle, bring this back for a future meeting. Any want to motion to that effect, Lee?
Sir, I'll move that we take the recommendation from Finance, as stated Finance.
Sir, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number 11 passed. The motion passed, and that was number 11. Anything else on that, Catherine?
No.
Number 12 is to consider the costs associated with the sale of property at 701 Second Street. This is a bit of housekeeping, but there are some expenses there, and we didn't specifically ask your approval. We have two bids for $1,500 for the survey work associated with preparing a certified survey map. Finance recommended S&amp;N survey. They both came in at the same price. The other costs will be minimal, but we anticipate there might be a small amount of legal fees. There's an application fee for the... Certified survey map variance, and then also filing fees for a certified survey map. And with that, it's a survey that would come out to be about $2,150. So we estimate all these to be under $3,000, but the Finance Committee made a recommendation that we approve up to $5,000 for the costs associated with closing that sale.
But I would correct, I don't think we made a recommendation to use S&amp;N. I think that was just your...
I think that was going to be an administrative decision.
Right.
That's true.
Second with the correction.
Motion in a second. Everyone clear on that? Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's approved. Thanks, Danny. Then we'll move on to unfinished business. Update on projects, Mr. Schwartz.
Mr. Mayor, I think that public safety was removed from consent.
Oh, that's right. I skipped that one. Let's go back to public safety. Sorry, Chuck.
Just take a second, maybe. I'd indulge the council to waive them paying the fee and have the $40 that it's going to cost to put it up come out of the signed budget.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
So I, may I ask a question?
May.
I'm just wondering what special circumstances there are in that area, and if we're prepared to put a children-at-play sign up on every block where there are children at play.
There are 22 kids under the age of 10 in that cul-de-sac. I find that unusual, but for $40, I think we could do a little class by spending that money and helping that area out. To me, it's common sense that we would pay for it. I understand your point by starting a precedence, but it's been bugging me since the Thursday meeting, and I think we should pay for it.
How many houses are in that cul-de-sac? It's about 10?
10?
10? I didn't see here. I don't remember.
Having not attended the Finance Meeting, what is the exact location of this sign?
Well, if you're familiar with Grandview Drive, as you come up through the low area down Stone Pike, you come up to the top. It's the extension. It becomes a dead-end cul-de-sac off to the east of Grandview. Is that what you meant? And I think it's, what they're desirous for is that there be a sign so that someone making that turn to the east off Grandview and coming onto their street would see that children live there.
Okay. Is this going to be on the same post that says dead end, or whatever it says?
Right. You would think logically it would go on the same post.
And what came up at public safety was, in previous cases, when a specific neighborhood wanted special signage, we approved it, and we also asked the neighborhood, since it was unique to the neighborhood, to fund the signage. So that's where the question came up at, safety.
Okay, and so this is a change in policy?
Well, that didn't happen in all cases.
It's a case-by-case.
But a case-by-case basis.
You know, I think this brings up the bigger issue of who pays for signage in general, and how we, you know, a lot of times it is public safety who approves the new signage, and yet it comes out of the public works budget. I think it's part of a larger question that needs some definition. But I think it's, and it's in my district, so I'm not trying to be difficult because of this particular location, but I think we could be opening ourselves up to every cul-de-sac in town, asking for signage of that sort.
Well, you could post one on every block on Third Street, because there are children at play all the time there. I'm not, I don't want to denigrate their need for, or their concern for their children, but you have a point. If we were to place children-at-play signs every place, every street where children play, that's a lot of streets.
I'll call the question for time's sake. If they don't agree, then we can charge the neighbors.
Well, okay, so the motion, was there a motion in a second?
So just for clarification, it came out of public safety, how?
Well, the question's been called, so no further discussion. Let's be clear on what the motion was, though.
That I moved the signage for children at play come out of public works, signed budget.
Okay. Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
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 My vote, no. So the motion fails four to three. I think it should be paid for, if it's a special request, they should pay for it.
Do we need another motion, then?
Yes, I suppose you would.
I move that we take the public safety recommendation.
Second. All right, there's a motion in a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, motion carries five to one. Now we're on to, Sean, are you all ready to go?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, since we have people here waiting for the item further on in the agenda?
Which item are you waiting for?
They're waiting for the reconsideration.
Reconsideration of the parking? All right, with no objection, let's move down to C, which is under unfinished business. Request to reconsider removal of a 10-minute parking space on Second Street. In an unusual turn, I end up voting in favor of this, so the question came, could we have reconsideration? That has to be asked for by a member of the council who voted yes. Since I did, I put it back on the agenda. There was a petition filed by some downtown merchants and citizens asking for reconsideration. And one of the things that came up, as Mr. Wyland and I talked about it, was the difficulty of enforcing short-term parking once our meter monitors aren't there to enforce it, because a policeman driving by really can't tell how long the car's been there. And we came up with the idea of what if there was a meter, such as our regular meters, where you can flip it and get 15 minutes free? How about if we had a temporary signage meter? With some investigation, the chief found that those are available, and you can have it for any amount you want to. So for example, a 10-minute meter where they could flip it and get their 10 minutes would be available at a cost of, I think it was $180 each?
$174.99.
$174.99. And so, you know, I wonder if that plan wouldn't work with those three original spots, but it's here for your reconsideration.
Is that a motion?
Do we need to have a motion to bring it formally for reconsider? Yeah. I'm not sure if I can make that motion, but I'm trying to. Okay. A motion to reconsider.
I'll second your motion.
Second the motion. Any discussion on whether to reconsider?
I think it's a good idea to reconsider. I wanted them to have the space to begin with, and the argument was that we have no way of controlling, like you stated, and if this is a way to control it, I don't think it would take long to reimburse the fund of these meters. If people start abusing it, they're going to get tickets.
All right. So now this is not on the question of solution, but this is discussion about whether to reconsider.
No, then I think yes, we should just reconsider.
Any other? All in favor of reconsidering, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, so the subject's open. What would you like to do here?
Can we first hear from Chief Jensen as to how this would operate? Would you mind, Marty?
Where are you getting the funding for it, too?
Well, there's plenty of money in the parking fund that would be able to purchase the meters, because that's where it would come out of. When I talked to Duncan Industries in regards to the meters, they have what they call free time meters. And what they do is they run on, similar to the meters we have now, except it has a push button, and you can program the amount of time you want to have on them. Once that time's expired, then it does exactly what our other meters do, it just flashes red. So what would happen in these cases is that if we were, my patrol officers were driving by at night, they see the meter flashing red, there's a vehicle in the parking space, they know to stop, issued a parking ticket, and they can be on their way without having to chalk the tire and wait 10 minutes to see if the vehicle's been used. And if this is something that works out well in these spaces, maybe this is something we can look at for other 15-minute parking spaces or 10-minute parking spaces we have downtown, which makes it much easier than having to chalk the tire and come back 10 minutes later and see if the vehicle's parked there.
So this is different from the meters we had years ago, which would give you a free 15 minutes.
They don't make, they don't make the mechanical ones anymore. These are all electronic.
It's the same concept.
Right, exactly.
Except we would never collect any money from these meters.
No, you can either get them with coin slots in them or without coin slots, and the recommendation would be without coin slots, so people can't put money in and try to get more time.
My further recommendation on this, which we won't be able to do tonight, because it takes an ordinance, and I thought we'd see if you're up for buying the meters first, is we ought to double the fine for these. And further, if you're witnessed going out and spinning the thing a second time and turning 10 minutes into 20 minutes, that ought to count as double the fine too, because that's what we don't want. I mean, that's what we had too much of, I think, in certain instances in the past. I think this might be a very simple solution, if, to solve the problem that was stated, which is, I want to pick up my takeout food at downtown restaurants, or drop off and pick up patrons, where somebody walked to get the car, and they want to come in and pick up the people that have been patronizing one of our downtown stores or restaurants. I think it'd be worth a try. If you don't want to do all three of them like that, we should at least try one.
I'll make a motion that we retain the two parking spots on Second Street. We had the one around the corner, on Locust, I believe, and put those 10-minute meters on each of them to allow us to enforce those parking spaces.
I'll second, but it's Walnut. What?
Yeah, Walnut, Walnut, sorry.
Did you say with the meters?
With the meters.
I don't second. Unless there's more money in there for a children-at-play sign.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a second to the motion. Any discussion? Randy?
Nope.
Lee, or Scott?
Lee used a very important word that I'd like to discuss with the chief here, and that is enforcement. None of this is going to work if it's not enforced. And I understand that, you know, the chief's concerns, especially about, you know, chalking tires and then coming back minutes later, and that's, you know, Denny can do that during the day, it's perfect, but that's tough at night. After you come back from the FBI school, I'd like to put on the agenda that we talk about having a policeman walk the streets downtown in the evening. Both of the last two meetings, we've had consideration of events which I believe could be handled by enforcement through a policeman on the beat, sticking his nose into the stores and bars and walking by the cars that are parked and enforcing these things. So if we could talk about that when you return, because enforcement is the key here. If it's not enforced, we can talk about it all night long and buy as many meters as we want. Won't work, unless we have enforcement. Thanks, Marty.
All right. Anybody else?
Well, I don't think we enforce any meters after, what, 5 o'clock in the afternoon?
Yeah, they're not, yeah, they're not enforced after 5 o'clock. But the 10-minute meter, my understanding, we've not talked about a 5:00 or 5:00 PM cutoff on the 10-minute.
There's a sign out there that says enforce 24 hours.
Right. And nobody pays any attention to it.
Which is why enforcement is the key.
I can't see spending $600. Why don't we just put it back the way it was?
Yeah.
And...
Original motion. And increase the fine if that's what you want.
I just don't think we're going to solve anything spending $600.
No.
Well, the solution's going to come through the police force. The meters are not the solution. Meters are a means of regulating this.
You're fighting the argument for just leaving it as is.
Well, the problem with as it is, as we have witnessed, is cars will sit there for two hours, which Lee and I both witnessed last night.
Enforcement.
Exactly my point.
That's your point. So it'll work. It's just enforcement. We don't need to spend $600 to do it.
But this gives a...
You can enforce it if you don't have a tool to help you know...
You need a measuring stick.
And if you look at the, if you just break it down to minutes and hours, and say, if a police officer has to sit there for 10 minutes every so often, how much is that worth? And at some point, it becomes worth more for him to sit there and chalk a tire and mark it after hours than it is for the cost of the meter.
All right, well, there's the motion. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, let's raise your hands. I only heard two yeses. All in favor, raise your hand. That's what I thought I heard. Opposed, raise your hand. All right, motion fails. Do you want to leave it as it was when we left the last meeting? Which is what'll happen if we don't have another motion here.
I'll make a motion to put it back the way it was before, with two in front on Second Street and one on Walnut Street.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure it's clarified, so there'll be 10 minute in front and 10 minute on the side.
Correct.
Okay, well, my discussion is without the meters, the police are hamstrung, and will have great difficulty enforcing this. And so what we've given up is another revenue-producing parking spot downtown, and cars will sit in there as long as they want.
Tom Zooli and I talked about, we do have the old mechanical meters. They aren't servicing those anymore, so we cannot change the 15 minutes free down to 10 minutes free. We could put them up and cover over the coin slot, make a sign that says, you know, flip this. It would do the same thing without any expense to us. You see what I mean? It'd work as a 15 free.
Why wouldn't we do that if it's free?
That's a good answer.
You can do that if you want to. You can do that if you want to.
I'd as well try it. I don't have a problem with it.
You would at least designate those spots as different, and the meters might...
We'll have our public work staff try to, just kinda rig that up, see how it works.
And that also gives Marty the enforcement that Scott and I want.
And where does this leave the, oh, excuse me, never mind, we covered that earlier, sorry.
All right. Well...
Because I do, I do believe that the enforcement is an issue, and I think that we need that to help make sure that the police can come by and can ticket those cars.
Maker of the motion and the seconder be okay with trying that?
Yes.
Yes.
Could we get clarification on the time of twenty-four hours a day as it is right now? That that is enforced, or isn't, it doesn't stop being enforced at 5:00 PM? Our other meters are free at 5:00 PM.
Right. And the intention of this is to, is to keep traffic moving, and that's, and we can...
Our other downtown spots become long-term parking spots at, starting at 5:00 PM. That's partly why we need this, because they get full and stay full. Now, by doing this, the, without the six hundred dollar expense, it'll be a fifteen-minute spot instead of ten.
That's okay. It's fine.
So now we have the expense of creating new signs? Because the one says ten minutes now.
Make the business owners pay for it. I wanna get that way.
All righty. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Let's go back to finance. We've got, Sean Lence is here. Betty Crusoe's here. I wanna do a presentation for how to finance our capital projects for 2010.
Thanks, Mayor. Counsel? Does everyone have this handout, hopefully, Akeem and the council packets? There should've been two of them, actually. This was the second one. I was initially gonna speak to the one with the orange, orange on the cover. Okay, I'm gonna go through this. I'm sure Betty will supplement the discussion as well. Devin and the mayor have been also a part of some of the discussion on this. But there is a number of parts on here that I wanted to cover, from looking at where the city's existing debt situation is, to looking at some new options that have come out of the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act that the city can consider for financing. And then, I think the council had asked at your last meeting to see some preliminary impact analysis of doing two and a half million, or doing two million. And then we've also had discussions about maybe adjusting the city's financing needs from, instead of doing a loan every year, a loan every other year for two years. So there's a number of different things that the handout will touch on. And again, if there's any questions as I move through it, feel free to interrupt me as we go from page to page. Well, to start out with, and I think we've covered page two, if you go to page three, the type of borrowing that we're talking about with this year's 2010 and/or 2010 and 11 financing is the use of general obligation debt. And general obligation debt is the lowest-cost borrowing option, because it gets the best interest rate, as well as the most flexible borrowing option for the city, because you can use it for almost any type of project that the city would be needing to finance, or needing to have an avenue to finance for. The state does put a limit on it in terms of the amount of general obligation debt that the city can have outstanding. That limit is five percent of the city's equalized valuation. So if you look at the bottom of this chart on page three, for Hudson, your borrowing capacity is about seventy-eight million. As of, as of this year, you have nine point two million outstanding. And so you've got sixty-eight million in borrowing capacity. So this, for, from the standpoint of, is this even an issue really for the city? It's not anymore. You have a very strong amount of borrowing capacity to use for projects. You've used this very conservatively over the years. And when you closed Special Taxing District, TID number four, we paid off a lot of outstanding debt that had to do with the infrastructure out there. So that's really the reason we're down to this amount right now of nine point two million. All right, now if we go over to page four, the borrowing capacity, geo-borrowing capacity, is one element we'd like to review. A second element that we'd like to review is what is the current and expected future levy necessary to pay principal and interest on the debt that the city currently has outstanding? And what you see on chart, the chart on page four, is last year's levy for principal and interest, and then the expected levy going forward through 2023. Your debt levy in 2009 was just under one point four million, and for this year, we were one million, one...
Two hundred fifty thousand less.
Yeah, two fifty less. And the two fifty less was, we were doing, as you probably recall, two fifty a year, very short-term borrowing a year, and that was not included in this year's budget. So that is really the drop that you see from the green bar down to the blue bar. And the way that the levy is situated right now, with no new debt, so this is where we're at currently with the existing debt that the city has, you can see from 2010 through 2018, there's not a big decline. And then, in 2018, down to 2019 or 2020, a significant decline in the necessary debt levy, given the debt that's outstanding currently.
Mostly ten-year bonds, is that what they are?
Ten-year issues, correct. Yep, that's right. All right, if we go over to page five, one other change since the last time that I spoke with the council, and I have talked with the mayor about this, and Devin and Betty are aware of it. In April of this year, Moody's Investor Service, who has previously rated the city of Hudson's debt, did what they call a recalibration. And so I'd like to spend a second on this, just so you, you have a little bit of background on this. What Moody's historically had done is they had two separate rating scales, one for corporate debt, one for governmental debt. And they were completely different, so they, there was, it was difficult to compare the two. And what they decided, I think mostly for competitive reasons, because their competitor was treating this differently, Standard and Poor's, is they decided to bring it all onto one scale. So they recalibrated the governmental scale to move governmental credits, like Hudson, over to the corporate scale. And what that's meant for almost all governmental issuers is an increase in your rating, or a betterment in your rating. In the case of Hudson, last year, you were a AA-three rated community. And if you look at the note, two steps down from that, AAA is the best rating, AA-one is below that, AA-two, and then AA-three. With this recalibration, Hudson's been moved from AA-three to AA-two. So we're only two steps from the very best rating that a governmental issuer city could have. What we're seeing is that this recalibration, even if it wasn't intended to be a benefit, because Moody's had argued it's just moving you from one scale to another, there's been some positive implications to it. In the case of Hudson, moving from AA-three to AA-two, I think that helps. It's really helped people that have gone from an A-scale to a double, AA-scale. Okay? So, at, if nothing else, it's an improvement. And we'll see where it goes from there. But again, you're at a, at a very, very high rating, and it's really from your sound financial practices in the past and successful growth of the city that you're at this level currently. Okay, from there, I wanted to spend a little bit of time going over a new borrowing tool that the city can consider with this year's financing, if, if again, you choose to do a, an issue this year. And that is a category of bonds or notes called Build America Bonds. And what Build America Bonds, and I should mention, too, just for reference, in this handout, there's a more thorough review of this, but I'll stick to the bullet points on page six here. What Build America Bonds are, is generally, in the past, when the city has financed projects, we've issued tax-exempt debt to finance them. And the Build America Bond concept is a little bit of a change. It's one eighty from that, a one eighty-degree change from that. What it, what it sets out is the city issuing taxable debt for your projects, rather than tax-exempt debt. But, in order to give a benefit still to the city, not the tax exemption, but a different benefit, the federal government would pay to the city thirty-five percent of the annual interest payments that you'd have on the debt. So it's, it's a change in, instead of the purchaser of the debt benefiting from the tax exemption that is on the debt, and thereby being able to give you a lower interest rate, because they're, they're able to not pay taxes on, on the payments that you, the interest payments that you make to them. This is a different, different benefit to, or subsidy to the city in a more, in a more direct way from the federal government. You issue the taxable debt, they give you the payment. The purchasers, purchaser of the debt is not getting the benefit. This can be used for capital projects, just like what the city has on your, your list for 2010 and preliminarily for 2011. It cannot be used to refund existing debt. And there are some other rules with it. You're limited to the amount of issuance expenses that the proceeds can be used for, two percent. And you, you then are responsible, the city is responsible, for doing the necessary paperwork and going through the necessary process to get that thirty-five percent rebate payment from the federal government. The rebate payment, I'll talk about that. It's currently under the law, it sunsets this year, at the end of 2010, in terms of new issues that are able to benefit from it. So if you do an issue in 2010 and you wanna use this option, under the current law, you have to do and close the issue before the end of 2010. If it's a two, if it's a ten-year issue, under the rules right now, you would get that thirty-five percent benefit for that, that ten, those, that ten-year period. You'd get that payment. A couple of risk factors on it. The, certainly, as with any federal law, Congress and the president could change the rebate. They could say, or stop the rebate. Five years into the loan, they could say, you know what? We've decided we're not gonna pay this anymore, and stop the program at that point. Or say, I know we told you, issuers of debt, that we would pay you that thirty-five percent rebate, we've decided to reduce it down to twenty-five percent for the rest of your loan periods. They're not saying they're gonna do that, but that is always a possibility. And in that separate handout, we go into those risk factors in some more detail. The other thing that I've mentioned to Betty and Devin is because this is a new program, the IRS is being much more diligent in reviewing how governmental entities are using this program. So whereas with tax-exempt debt, I don't think the city's ever been audited or ever received a questionnaire, asking about it. With Build America Bonds, I would say it's very likely that you're gonna get a correspondence from the IRS saying, how did you use the money? Are you following all the rules, and so on and so forth? So, certainly, it can be a benefit, but again, there are some issues that you should certainly be well aware of before considering it as an option.
Could you give me one reason why it would be a benefit to do something like this?
Yeah, actually, if we go to the next couple pages, hopefully, that'll answer that question. What we're seeing right now, and I, this is very simplistic, so I apologize for this, but historically speaking, on the top of this, what I called an interest rate continuum on page seven, when you look at a continuum of interest rates, from the highest interest rates to the lowest interest rates, taxable debt has been higher. The State Trust Fund Loan Program, it's a program through the state of Wisconsin for borrowing money, somewhere in between, and tax-exempt debt has been the lowest. With Build America Bonds, tax-exempt debt and the State Trust Fund Loan with the Build America Bond option are coming in very similar, interest rate-wise and cost-wise. Taxable debt, as a Build America Bond, is coming in with a lower cost. And specifically for what we're preliminarily looking at in Hudson, if you go to page eight, I ran an analysis last week based on interest rates that were received in the market last week for a tax-exempt issue, and for a taxable issue that was done as a Build America Bond. The blue section represents that taxable interest rates as a Build America Bond. Green section represents the tax-exempt bonds. And the long and short of it, with that thirty-five percent rebate, right now, the taxable Build America Bonds come in about forty thousand dollars lower in interest, interest cost to the city. So, part of that, that's your benefit right now, is the thirty-five percent seems to be creating a situation where the taxable debt, with getting that thirty-five percent benefit, is of lower total cost than the tax-exempt debt would be.
But that's assuming that that thirty-five percent rebate continues for ten years.
Absolutely, it is. Yes, it is. Yep.
And that's not factoring anything for the post-issue compliance review from the IRS or additional paperwork and staff time?
Correct, Mayor, yes. If you, if you were given an audit, or that's time, that's money to react to those, absolutely. Yep. So, it sunsets at the end of this year. It certainly is something that the city can consider. And I think if you were gonna proceed with the financing this year, one of the questions I would ask of the council is, do you feel comfortable doing the Build America Bond route? Or do you feel more comfortable with the tax-exempt route? Some communities have asked us to solicit competitive proposals, giving the bidders the option of doing either one. But I think you would only wanna do that option if you were comfortable with the Build America Bond option. You wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna do it if you were uncomfortable with that option.
Out of curiosity, if one of these audits came through, any, any idea how much it would cost us in staff time and ongoing expenses with your company to fulfill the audit?
If you got a full-blown audit, I, I think that would be expensive, because you're probably talking about bringing in legal review as well. If you just get the questionnaire, I'd say maybe that is a day to three days' worth of time to make sure you got all the work together to answer that questionnaire and send it in. And I'd say it's very likely you're gonna get that questionnaire. I think the IRS has been direct that they will send those questionnaires out to issuers of Build America Bonds.
So over ten years, we could be thirty days' worth of work?
Well, I, I would say that the questionnaire would hopefully just come at the beginning of the issue or once. If it comes every year, it would be real repetitive, because I think the questions would be the same. So I, I think it would be a one-time shot, although there's no, no guarantee of that.
I'm not comfortable, if you're looking for opinions on that.
Well, let's let him come to the end, and we'll, we'll have discussion.
Sure. Okay. Well, getting back to the, the council's request from the last meeting, we've put together some preliminary options, looking at a financing to give us two and a half million dollars for projects, and a financing to give us two million dollars for projects. And we've looked at it both in a one-year impact, and then also looked at, the city continues to need to borrow about a million a year, or two million borrowed every two years. What, what do we expect the impact of that to be going forward into the future? So let me start with page nine. The blue bars that you see on page nine are similar to that exhibit I talked about before as to where the city's existing debt situation is. The yellow is a new two million, five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar issued to finance projects for 2010 and 11. The annual payment on that, to pay that back in full over ten years, approximately two hundred and ninety-three thousand a year. And what you see with adding that debt on top of the city's existing debt is we really jump back up to about 2009 levels by adding this, this on top of that existing levy as to where at currently. Okay? Now, if you go to the next page, in talking this through with Devin and Betty and the mayor, we also thought it would be of some value to the council to look at the future projected debt situation if we were to issue again two million in 2012 and 2014, kind of on a two-year cycle to finance capital projects. And so the sense that this chart is trying to give you is where... And so the sense that this chart is trying to give you is where would the debt levy go under this circumstance? In which you see that the yellow bar then, the yellow portion of the bars are, are representative of the two thousand and ten issue, twelve and fourteen. You'll see that that levy is gradually getting up to, uh, over one point nine million, uh, when you see out to two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and eighteen, and then falls out over time, uh, down to two thousand and twenty-three. And this is a scenario too where each of those options, we're paying it back with equal payments, uh, over a ten-year period, in full over a ten-year period. We looked at other options too of pushing principal back and kind of wrapping the debt around. Some of the trade-offs of that though is you, you're paying more interest because you have the, the principal out for a longer period of time. So this was the, uh, the options of, of looking at two point five million in two thousand and ten and then roughly financing for two million in two thousand and twelve and fourteen. If we go to page eleven then, page eleven is looking at issuing two million in two thousand and ten or, or issuing, uh, enough to finance two million in capital projects, two million and fifty-five thousand would be the issue size. That payment would be around two hundred and thirty-four thousand a year for a ten-year period. So you can see it compared to the two and a half million, about sixty thousand dollars, uh, less in principal and interest costs over that ten-year period to pay that back. And if we go over to page twelve, this option is two million, fifty-five thousand in two thousand and ten, two million, fifty-five thousand in twelve and fourteen. A lower total impact, instead of going up over a million nine in two thousand and fifteen and sixteen to pay back principal and interest, uh, this impact goes to about one million, eight sixty. In either option though, you can see that from, if I'm looking at this from your overall budget situation, uh, again, Betty, this year's debt levy is one million. One million one. You're gonna get up to, uh, one million eight as you add the debt for two thousand and ten, fourteen, or twelve and fourteen. So that would be an increase in your budget, or you would need to do adjustments in other parts of the budget to be able to absorb that within the current budget levels that you're at. I would mention again to the council, under current levy limitations, we've talked about this issue before as well, general obligation debt is outside of the levy limit. So operating costs or levying for capital is, you have to be, be within your levy limitations that the state's imposed. Geo-debt is outside of the levy limit, so you, you do have flexibility to, if you choose to, to increase the levy to support a higher debt service levy to pay debt back. Okay? Okay, uh, now we did talk about another alternative as well in terms of dealing with the two thousand and ten and eleven, uh, capital projects. And that option was the option of doing something on an interim basis for two thousand and ten to cover, uh, your debt costs or capital project costs that cannot be funded with cash, cash that's available. And then in two thousand and eleven, you would do the financing at that point to pay off the interim loan as well as finance the two thousand and eleven capital projects at that time. That would be another approach. Uh, some, I guess some thoughts on that one? I, I'm not sure, and I, the council would have to give me some feedback if, if you really are a hundred percent sure of what your capital projects in two thousand and eleven will be, or whether that needs some, uh, additional time to flush out. Uh, another thought on that approach is if you do borrow the money this year for two thousand and ten and eleven, the funds that you would be setting, setting aside for two thousand and eleven, you would be investing those dollars, but you are gonna invest those dollars at a lower rate of return than what you're borrowing at. Even though borrowing rates are very low right now, uh, toward historic low levels, uh, your investment rates are even, even tougher, they're even lower. Okay, so there is some, some loss on that. Uh, the interim rate, I think you've done a little research on this so far, uh, Betty. Uh, and then also we're, we're gonna be subject to whatever the interest rates would be in two thousand and eleven then for that two thousand, uh, eleven and ten loan at that time. So there would be some interest rate risk in terms of waiting, uh, and to see what rates would be.
But wouldn't that be offset by the tax credit if we decided to go that route?
I, I'm sorry?
I was just thinking about the, the refund on the tax credit, wouldn't that offset some of the, um, carrying costs for carrying a million over a year?
Yeah, if you, if you're talking about that forty thousand in, in savings, uh, potentially, potentially so, if you were comfortable using that Build America Bond option. I, I would mention as well that as of right now, I do think that this legislation, Build America Bond, will be extended, but as of right now, it sunsets at the end of two thousand and ten. So if the council was feeling that was the option you wanted to use, the only way to guarantee you could use it is two thousand and ten because it may be sunset and then not be available in two thousand and eleven. Okay, uh, now I, we've thrown a lot of stuff at you within this, this handout, but I think that the decisions and they're, and I'm sure that you're gonna have more discussion, but the decisions would need to, I think I broke down into a couple of different areas. One is the capital projects, would the council prefer to go forward with those, the financing for those for ten and eleven? And would you prefer to do it in two thousand and ten? Or interim finance it and do it in two thousand and eleven? That would be one question. The other question would be if you wanted to do the financing in two thousand and ten for those two years, do you want to consider the Build America Bond option? Or do you feel that's not a best fit for Hudson and just stick with the more traditional, uh, tax exempt option? And then lastly would be the timeline. Uh, I would think the quickest we could move at this point would be to do a sale at your July nineteenth meeting, which I think is your second meeting in July, which would, uh, put cash in hands to pay for the projects in, uh, in August. Okay?
Yes, sir. Uh, Build America Bond, the reason for the tax, uh, higher tax rate, was that because they were ha- hard times selling general obligation bonds, is that why it was put in place initially?
Yes, it, it's certainly, uh, um, within the broader stimulus package, this was included in there to, uh, to try to get activity going. I think that certainly was the goal. Yep.
But the unintended consequences are it's a lower rate, hardly a lower rate than a general obligation bond to the city. You get, you get the thirty-five percent back.
Right. The thirty-five percent is an arbitrary number. They just said this, it's, you can give you a thirty-five percent. What we've seen is the market for taxable debt with the thirty-five percent rebate compared to tax exempt debt, which we've traditionally used, the thirty-five percent is driving that cost down below what tax exempt debt is. Now, they didn't know for sure that that would be the case because it, it depends on where the taxable and tax exempt markets are. But for the last couple of months, for sure, that, that has been the case. Thank you.
And if I understood you correctly, Sean, the thirty-five percent could change by congressional action at any time?
It's always a possibility. Right.
Right. And so we would have to walk that tightrope for ten years if we may didn't reduce that rebate from thirty-five percent to twenty-five, would be ready?
Yeah, I should mention, uh, this doesn't eliminate the risk, but what we've been doing when communities have chosen to use the Build America Bond option is we've been putting, uh, what's called an extraordinary prepayment provision in the, the, the bond documents. So then if the federal government did that, you would have the option of immediately refinancing the debt and getting into tax exempt rates at the time, whatever the market is at that time. That is a, that gives you some flexibility, but if tax exempt rates are up from when you did the original issue, it wouldn't be a benefit to you. But we have been including that, uh, to give you at least some flexibility to deal with that risk if the federal government would make that choice.
How heavily used is the Build America Bond across the state, across the U.S.?
Yep, uh, in two thousand and nine, it, it was a little slow catching on. In two thousand and ten, I think, uh, primarily because taxable rates are already very low, it's been very popular. A lot of people have used it because, uh, they've, they've seen the numbers that you're seeing here, that there's that forty thousand dollars less, less in cost. So this year, we've seen a lot of issuers, uh, choose it. And when we've done sales, uh, offering both options, the taxable with thirty-five percent rebate is one, I think in every case. It's compared to the tax exempt.
So the Congress making a decision would impact a lot of communities, is my point.
Oh, uh, absolutely. Yeah, there have been, uh, I believe there's been issues up to a billion dollars for, using Build America Bonds. And there's issuers that have, uh, done issues, I think up to twenty-five to thirty years in length to using Build America Bonds. I, that, obviously you're taking on much more risk that the rules could change when you're going.
Right.
Well, Sean, as you have said, our Moody's rating is what, at the top. I'm not sure what the other communities that have taken this at. We've been rated for how long in the top of Moody's rating scale? So why would we, uh, wanna even change what we've been doing in the past? Traditionally, it's working for us. I see no reason why I would take a stimulus package because that's what it's from, right? The federal stimulus package?
That's where this option came out of.
And I know for a fact, I've had conversations with constituents, they don't want that money. We've been doing fine without it. I think we need to stay on that path.
Yeah, I should mention, uh, the, the rating, the bond rating, uh, as you said, very good, very strong for the city. Um, they're probably, it, they would not look at it as a negative if you use that option. But the one thing that they do ask, uh, for, for clarification on is, do you have a backup plan in case that thirty-five percent doesn't materialize? So certainly that reality has to be discussed with the rating agency if you choose that option.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Sean, I'm, I'm wondering if you did a similar analysis, um, to us not borrowing this year and just covering the four, approximately four hundred thousand through local borrowing and then borrowing in two thousand and eleven? What impact that would have on mail rate?
Yeah, I, I think you ultimately would end up, uh, in a similar spot, but a couple of things that you'd have to decide on to, to do a real good analysis of that. Uh, one is, and maybe Betty can help me a little bit with this, you've got, I think, two fifty in your budget this year. And the question would be, would you use that same two fifty next year to reduce your borrowing? Uh, or would you add, or would that two fifty go to some other expense? I think that's part of, we'd have to have almost a commitment to say, this is earmarked for these types of projects to run a scenario. I think what it does do though is you would, if you do earmark those dollars for reducing your borrowing, the two and a half million would go down to two million if you use the two fifty each year. And then the impact that you see here would start in two thousand and twelve instead of starting in two thousand and eleven.
But it would be the same impact and interest.
Okay.
I'm a believer that most things could be priced and most risk could be priced. And I'm curious whether your firm is considered, uh, for example, in the, um, the question of the IRS compliance review, why would you not price us a product, say, look, here's an offering, we don't know, but we think it might come with some backend costs that you can't predict and we can't predict, but here's our price and that'll cover whatever costs come up from IRS review. Why won't you just shoot us a price on that that, and then we'd know? Could you do that?
Sure, sure, Mayor. I think, uh, what, uh, we, we've been saying is a good way to deal with that possibility if you're gonna go the Build America Bonds route is, uh, formalizing a post-issuance compliance policy, which does deal with a lot of the, uh, uh, questionnaires that we've seen on the sample, questions from the IRS. I don't know that we have a, a formal policy right now to deal with that. Uh, I think with the time and the models, I, I think you're probably talking, uh, to get something like that together, Mayor, maybe five hundred bucks. It's not, it wouldn't be a real expensive, but there would be some cost to putting together a post-issuance compliance policy for the city. So that would be an upfront issue and an additional cost, certainly.
And then in the same vein where you're suggesting the extraordinary call feature in case that the subsidy's not available and we need to refinance, we, you would help us refinance then without any further issue costs or anything at that time? So you wouldn't charge us the usual thirty-five thousand dollars in one point to do a refinance?
No, that's, that's another very good point is that the refinancing, you, I would say you'd be subject to, to do that, take advantage of that extraordinary call. You would, uh, you would have to get, deal with the reissue costs, whatever they would be at that point, as well as whatever the interest rate is at that point to take advantage of that option. Yep. Certainly those costs would not, uh, would not go away.
But I'm just asking whether you would offer us a price right now upfront that says, look, if we do this issue, here's your price upfront for both the original issue and if needed, the reissue based on the extraordinary call. I mean, could you price that?
Yeah, you know, that's, it, that is not something that we have done, uh.
No one's asked you to.
No one has asked that, actually, yeah. It's, uh, you know, I think that the safest way to do it, and, and I could certainly discuss with my group, an option of, should we consider if this reality happens approaching from our pricing? And you'd also have, is, is I think you're aware that the number you quoted, it includes the bond council costs and the rating agency costs and some other costs. So there's that whole, whole, you'd have to talk with those other parties as well to get a, a firm number. Uh, but right now, I think the reality is, is that the costs are replicated at the time you would do that reissuance.
So what we're saying is that there'd be thirty-five, forty thousand dollars worth of cost to reissue if the thirty-five percent went away causing us to be zero or less in, in, in gain. There wouldn't be any gain over ten years if that were to become a reality.
Yeah, I, I think the, the, the analysis that you, you would have, that we would show the city at that time is, here's what you're paying now. If you do, it, it'd be the same analysis that we show when we talk about refinancing any issue. If you refinance this, here's what we think the rates would be, here's your costs to do the refinancing. And we always show the number net of all costs in terms of what the savings would be. Then the decision for the council would be, does, does it save any money or not? Or are we better just staying with where we're at right now?
Council have any more immediate questions for Sean about the Build America Bonds? About the, um, future impact on the debt levy? About the four questions that he laid out, the action steps that we need to consider? There were four. Timing. Sean, if you could stay for a little while.
Absolutely. Yep.
I think maybe we should have Betty talk us through some of our discussion about projects this year, projects next year, the impact of some of the sale of properties.
One thing I'd like to kind of expand upon what, what Sean was saying when he said that our, our debt levy would eventually go up to like one point eight or one point nine million, or, or up to, yeah, one point eight, one point nine. Um, keep in mind that that's like usually in two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increments every two years. So you have some time with growth, you have some time to absorb that through budget, um, monitoring and cutting too. So just keeping that in mind, it just doesn't go from one point, almost one point two million, bam, up to one point eight million. It goes up in two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increments. So you'd have one point four billion for two years, one point six point, you know, one point six million for two years. So it goes up in increments in, in two hundred and fifty thousand over two years. So, because it sounds awful, the way he said it, but it does go in over time. So, okay, back to, um, the reason that we got here is that we had, um, put together our, our capital outlay for two thousand and ten and we came up with about a million dollars. We also had a short-term financing that we borrowed internally of six hundred thousand dollars to purchase the, um, building on First Street that we were going to pay back with this debt issue. So as we were working the numbers, um, it became one point six or one point four million, depending upon the two hundred and fifty thousand that we levied for debt reduction. So as we looked at that, it didn't seem practical to spend the money that we would have to issue, you know, the fifty thousand dollars that we're talking about, fifty, sixty thousand dollars for such a small issue. So we started looking at doing a two-year. We were already moving along pretty fast. I mean, things were going on down on the First Street building and we were moving along, trying to get our, our projects together for the summer, so things were progressing and we weren't having funding. So things were, um, uh, working along and we're trying to figure out the best way to do this. So we looked at the two-year period of two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. Initially, I think I got about three point eight million dollars worth of requests for next year or total with the two-year period. So we've kind of whittled that down, we sat down, um, looked at it. And, um, based on what the history of the council's been doing is a million dollars a year, whether it's street improvements, usually one major street project with the other street mills overlays, patching, um, also with some other side projects going, whether it's park or some equipment purchasing. So on the average in the history, we've been doing about a million dollars. And so, um, when we looked at two thousand and eleven, we said, okay, let's say we're gonna do a million dollars. And that would keep us on the normal level of what we've been doing. Um, however, in two thousand and eleven, there's some major equipment. However, in two thousand and eleven, there's some major equipment in public works that's going to be needing replacing. One is the snow blower and one is, help me, Tom, Tom's not there.
Street sweeper.
Street sweeper, thank you. Those two, about another three hundred thousand dollars worth of heavy equipment above what we normally do. So when we put together the scenarios, it was, you know, the two million like we normally do, one million for two thousand and ten, one million for two thousand and eleven, and then we also looked at like two point five million, should we look at adding on any additional projects that we hadn't even included or that extra equipment? Now, the reason we did that is because the rates are so low right now. And I think with that, we came up with what we could possibly need. The other things that were the factors in this is that the building started to sell. Fourth Street sold, Second Street's looking at selling. So now we have a method to pay back that six hundred thousand dollars that we did internally buy. So that's brought our borrowing down even more. So at this point, we do have the option, I think we went through it earlier, that we could borrow short-term, about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, to get us through two thousand and ten, and then issue in two thousand and eleven. The mayor brought up a good point, that we would save approximately thirty thousand dollars in issuance costs because we would not issue this year. There is that savings. There's also the considerations to keep in mind, timing. I think timing's very important in the sense that if we do get this money, come spring, you have the money is available, you can have your projects out and going and bid quite early, which is, can be a cost savings for you, too, especially if you're going to look at, you know, like the intersection again. Not that I want to bring that up, but, so if we're going to do that, we could do it early in the spring as versus probably right smack in the summer.
Since we've kind of committed to do it early in the spring, do we have to issue this debt now to pay for it? Or how will we cover it next spring?
We don't. The city has sufficient funds to carry. It's a matter of some paperwork that we do, you know, internally in finance, that we do carry, you know, some of these expenditures, because we've already spent almost four hundred thousand dollars of the money we haven't borrowed yet. So we do that internally, we fund it until we do do the issuance with the thought that it's going to come. It won't impact it, no. It's just the thought process that the money's there and public works can start working on it.
But if you keep looking down the road, we've got, we know we need a new ambulance, you know, we could potentially have land for the public safety building we have to purchase. Those things down the road are adding up.
But those would be capital expenditures and not general obligation bonds?
Right, we've never bonded for an ambulance.
Not yet.
Well, that's, that's my point, but. Okay. At Finance, we got into a little review of this item and then left it over for the full discussion. This might be a good time to go through, why don't you turn to the page on my letterhead where it goes through some flows of money, uses and sources of funds? So at the top for this year, the top number, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital outlay projects for two thousand and ten. We've got attached on the backside, the capital projects as they stand right now, and you can see that for what we've already committed to, the adjusted and up-to-date numbers on the remaining projects, it stands at seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five if we were to do all of those.
And that's taken Vine and Second out?
That's with Vine and Second out, right. You might ask, how would you get to seven fifty? I would make a couple of cuts there pretty quickly and adjust things down. I'd probably adjust the Beach House Trail back down to its original. I would probably adjust the furniture and equipment in the police department, and we could discuss that. Or we could do all of those as there are, or we could do more. But we've had a number of things come in under budget, which is good. Anyway, without belaboring that, seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred thousand, you pick the number, that's what we have left to do for this year. We borrowed six hundred thousand as an internal borrow in order to complete the purchase of the NMC building on First Street. That six hundred thousand dollars should be replaced internally so as to show our undesignated fund balance at the level that we'd like it to be. That's part of keeping our good bond rating. We've had a couple of increases lately, one about five years ago, one about a year ago. And now through some Moody's recalibration, we're about ready to see another one. And we'd like to keep that good bond rating. The interest, if we were to do a short-term borrowing, what we would do is we, instead of doing a full-fledged bond issue, we'd just go to one of the local banks. We've done it before. We'd borrow, the rate that we've been quoted is three point nine five percent. Interest cost to do that for nine months to get us through until a full-fledged issue next year would be about sixteen thousand dollars. And so if we did that, then here's where we'd get the money to do those projects. It would be the proceeds from Fourth Street, which we got a check of about four hundred and forty thousand dollars for that in the end, net of all the brokerage and so on. On Second Street, we've got a sale inked. It hasn't closed, there's a few contingencies to be worked through, but we'll probably net about two hundred and fifty-five thousand. And then, as Sean and Betty alluded, we've been putting in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for debt reduction each year in our regular budget in the levy for that. And you take all that, we would need then, for this year alone, we need about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do our project list for this year. And that's getting to be a pretty low number. So that's where this idea of, let's just borrow it short-term and talk about bonding next year, that's where that idea came from. If we did that plan, then what would happen would be, next year, we'd choose our capital projects for next year. I put in the number of one point two five million, simply because that was halfway between the preferred number of one point five by some of our members here and the preferred number of one million by some of our other members. So that could be adjusted up or down. But at one point two five, we'd have to then refund the local bank for what we had borrowed. We would have some issuance expenses on the new two thousand and eleven issue. And, you know, it would ultimately end up being somewhere around one point five million that we would be doing. Again, you're back with this plan, you're back to where that's kind of a skinny issue to carry all the issuance costs and the origination fee and so on. When you're only borrowing one to one point five million, the costs loom rather large. So with that, you might look at both reef, you know, doing almost a three-year issue and spreading those issuance costs essentially over three years. So you would essentially fund two thousand and ten, which was done on a short-term, plus two thousand and eleven, plus two thousand and twelve. And you take that sixty thousand dollars a year that we've been sometimes eating in a one-year period, sometimes spreading over two years, and we do something that we've never done before, we essentially spread it over three years. And so your sixty thousand goes down. Betty's page, go back a page where she looked at those various interest costs, that was, this is just based on interest alone for the lower two, as if there were no issuance costs. But you can see what the issue costs are estimated to be for doing the short-term, it's about five hundred dollars, lawyer fees, and five hundred dollars paperwork and IRS filings, I think if you were to. And using that, this looks as though it's pretty much an apples and apples, but if you were to put on the origination fee and issuance costs, that tends to run about thirty, twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars a year on the long-term debt, I really think that there is savings in doing a short-term note. Now that said, we don't know what interest rates are, but we never do.
And you're saving about fifteen thousand because otherwise it would be thirty thousand for raising.
Correct. It's not a lot of money. So there's pros and cons, and I think this is separate and aside from whether you do the Build America Bonds. I think that's a whole nother subject. This is a, comes down to, should we borrow ahead, put money away in an investment where we're borrowing at a cost of roughly three percent and investing at one percent, or whatever the number is? You know, so there's that two percent loss in there, but then you've got the money. I also worry that when we've got the money and it's just sitting there all ready to go, that it's a little harder to say no when they want the, I mean, now, I've only been doing this for three years, but I tell you what, that snow blower's been on its last legs each and every one of the last three years, and it continues to blow snow. So I was interested to hear, this is the year that it has to be replaced?
Next year, next year.
Next year?
Yeah, next year.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think it probably makes sense to go borrow short-term right now and look at two thousand and eleven, what we need to do at that time. I don't think we have a firm budget for two thousand and eleven on our capital expenditures. I think we need to sharpen our pencil again, go look at that again later in the year when we do our budgets.
I guess that's part of my concern, you know, we're projecting two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. And can we think out that far yet?
I agree with Alan, but I think that the savings to be had with short-term can be done this year as no other because it's going to be a long time, I believe, before we have almost seven hundred thousand dollars in income from the sale of two properties. And this is the year to do that short-term loan as opposed to GO bonds. In my mind, the Build America Bonds are simply off the table. Too many variables, I think we, since we don't know what's going to happen if we use them or if we don't use them, I think we should be moving to the side of caution. And especially since the total savings, if everything went without a hitch, the total savings over ten years is less than, on a compounded basis, less than four thousand dollars a year. I don't think the payoff is there to go to the B A Bs. So I would suggest that we, as Alan said, go with short-term financing for this year and reap some savings there and talk about bonding for a biennium of two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. And when you fold in two thousand and ten, there's your three years.
Is that a motion?
I'm not sure that's subject. Catherine, you may have to give us a little help on this. We only put on the agenda tonight, consider authorizing a solicit bid for promissory notes. I'm not sure we can do that tonight, except.
By not doing it.
By not doing it, then, but we'd still have to come back at our next meeting to actually do what you're saying.
And do what I've just said.
Right.
Well, then my motion would be to not take action on this tonight.
Am I right about that?
Yeah, you haven't talked about authorizing.
I thought about that over the weekend, that I'd made a mistake in preparing tonight's agenda. I'm sorry for that.
Just ahead of your time, sir. So my motion is to postpone this matter until our next meeting.
One second.
All right, there was a motion and a second to postpone this until the next meeting. Any discussion?
Any other thoughts from anybody else?
I agree with you.
Well, I'll tell you this, and it might seem contrary, because I've had skepticism about the B A Bs from the beginning, but I told Sean that, you know, I'll bring it to you and try not to color the discussion too much. Hopefully, I didn't. But I did. I have some concerns about them. And it's, to me, it's a bit reminiscent of just three or four years ago when you could go in and get a mortgage and they'd say, yep, this'll adjust and it'll do this and this and this, but look at what you're saving. Yeah, look at what you're saving, but there are some unknowns, and there's more than one who's gotten bitten four or five years down the road by, you know, what looked like a really smart thing at the time, and with the knowledge you had at the time, it looked good. And I just think there are some unknowns with them.
Well, I'm not sensing from anyone, unless they haven't spoken up, that there is interest in those, so.
What Sean suggested and didn't say tonight was really the suggestion was that we would go out to bid, and our and our offer would be a joint bid where they could bid on one or the other. And then his advice to us was that we should not just do that with no intention to accept the B A Bs. If the B A B actually came in the lowest, that we should take it. My problem with that, as I tried to bring out tonight, is I think there's potentially some hidden costs in the B A B that, you know, it's hard to price in. And if we actually had that pricing in there, then that plan would work. Anyway. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? All right, motion passed. That takes us on to, let's see, we got a little out of order. I think Chuck was geared up to come to the podium about forty-five minutes ago. Here he is. Update on projects. Sorry about that, Chuck.
Not a problem. Not a problem. Before we get into some housekeeping on Second and Vine, not a lot to report. I do have a draft of the Wisconsin S T P application. That's in Tom's hand right now, being reviewed, and we'll get that to the county by the end of the month. Couple of private jobs, looking to do some concrete driveway work up at Goodwill sometime this week. Tire Pros is moving along, getting fairly close to doing their second lift of pavement on that. Heritage Cottage is two up in the Heritage Green area. They're looking at, wanted to do their second lift of pavement, probably next month sometime. So.
I have a question real quick about Crestview. How long ago did we do that? Year and a half, two?
We didn't do it last year, we did it a year before, so it would have been twenty, two oh eight.
Why are there cracks already being sealed in there?
Well, cracks are anticipated, you know, the road will crack after a year of a freeze thaw, so that was anticipated. There are a few cracks, though, that we're, we're looking at investigating a little bit further now to bring it up with, because some of the seal work that was done in two thousand and nine, you know, is failing prematurely, so we are looking at that.
Will you make sure that's back on the project updates, then?
Yeah, sure. Any other questions?
Edenland Farms, the re-rocking and resealing of those streets, has there been a resolution of the problem that was up there, as with the contractor, or we can, do we feel comfortable that we got our money's worth on that job?
It, the contractor's looked at it, he hasn't responded formally to us. We've had some informal discussions with them, and we're just, at this point, we're still watching it. I suspect in the next two weeks, there will be some sort of onsite meeting with the contractor because, you know, the, it seems to have stabilized somewhat. But again, I don't think that, you know, by any means, it's, it stopped rapidly, we anticipate. But contractor wanted to watch its performance and engage how it does over the first part and in the heat of the summer.
So what do you? I'd like to have you consult with Chuck on that.
Okay.
Because I think we have potentially either substandard materials or workmanship on that project. And if we can come to that determination, we need to get a resolution with him. Anything else for Chuck? Chuck, thanks for staying. Oh, well, you weren't finished yet. Oh, yeah, 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 we got the bids in. You better talk about that a little.
Just a little bit of housekeeping at the last meeting. You didn't decide to delay the project, but just to clarify, in accordance with the contract documents, you do have sixty days to accept or reject the bids. You can reject the bids anytime. Seems that was a pretty clear direction as far as delaying it to next year, so in accordance with Article nineteen, you have the right to reject any or all bids. At this time, it'd be appropriate to formally reject the bids and return the security.
This is Agenda Item B, consider rejecting the bids for Second and Vine.
Move to reject the bids, all bids.
Motion to reject all the bids. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Chuck talked about potentially asking if the bid could stay open or the price could stay open till next year, and we reconsidered and decided not to do that.
Yeah, it gets kind of.
Difficult.
Difficult, yeah.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Thank you, that motion passes. And where's that take us? We've done C already. Okay, Denny's here waiting for new business. Consider extension. Okay, Denny's here waiting for new business. Consider extension of the moratorium on electronic message board signs, ordinance, number eleven-dash-ten.
Simply to cut to the chase, uh, we just need more time to look at this issue. Recommend, uh, extension of moratorium.
Move to suspend the rules.
There's a motion to suspend the rules toward adoption of ordinance number eleven-dash-ten and a second by O'Malley. Any discussion on the suspension? Um, or roll call vote on the suspension?
Marseh?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchow?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaffo?
Yes.
Motion passed. Rules are suspended.
Move to adopt ordinance eleven-dash-ten.
Second.
There's a motion and second to adopt ordinance eleven-dash-ten. Any discussion? Anything else, Denny? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Ordinance is adopted. Uh, thanks, Denny. Okay. Communications and recommendations of the mayor. The only, I have one comment, Relay for Life is this weekend, and that's a good event. This is lots of dollars. Um, so June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth is, uh, I'm proclaiming as Relay for Life Days to be celebrated at Newton Field, commemorate that event, and I encourage you to support them. Um, another brief comment in regard to our discussion in the newspaper article on the discussion regarding the, um, Wisconsin street, uh, and the potential for, uh, special assessments. I think a little clarification, it said, it may have said in the article that all new road surfaces are special assessed. Well, that is the case, but repair of the road surface is not special assessment. The thing in this case, as it pertains to this project, the road surface itself is, we're considering that it's being replaced, but curb and gutter and sidewalks and things that don't currently exist, that's what would be special assessed to the adjoining property owners. Correct?
It was under the scenario I put together, it was the road, the curb and gutter was all being assessed, a hundred percent.
A hundred percent for the road?
Fifty percent on the path.
Okay.
Following logic of ninety-seven.
All right. Um, any older persons, communications and items for future agendas?
Just a comment on the budget and, uh, the capital funding. I'd like to compliment you, Mr. Mayor, and Devon and Betty on, I think we got really good information. And it's a lot easier to make a decision when the information is available to us. So, thank you and good job.
Anyone else?
I'd like to, uh, let everyone know that, uh, the St. Croix Sailing School provides business for its second season this week. This past week, uh, last year at this time, there were thirty students signed up. This year, there are slightly more than one hundred students already signed up. Um, and I would like to advise parents that if they do wish to enroll their children, uh, please go to stcroixsailingschool.org and sign them up because, um, it's just about full.
Anyone else? City attorney?
Nothing.
City administrator?
Other than the budget, we mentioned that we are starting in the next month, so we'll be starting on next year's budget with the Department of Eds. But the committees will be involved with that actually.
Okay, I believe that completes tonight's agenda.
Move to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you.